Go ahead and call tonight's regular city council meeting to order. And for tonight's invocation, we've got Pastor Ryan Whitley of the Cavalier Baptist Church.
Praise, Heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you today, God, and we thank you for this day. God, we thank you for your presence in our lives. God, I thank you for each individual in here, God, the contributions, or that they make to our community, Lord, and the leadership that they show. God, I pray you be with this meeting tonight. God, I pray that you will lead and guide, God, give wisdom where wisdom is needed. And again, Lord, we thank you for your presence in our lives, and thank you for just having a purpose for each and every one of us. Lord, we love you and we thank you. It's your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Do you join in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Shawn Burdell.
Here.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Here.
Rob Heatherling.
Here.
Bruce Jones.
Here.
Ray Coons.
Here.
John Lawrence.
Here.
Martin Voda.
Here.
Earl Walters.
Here.
All aldermen present. First, I'd like a motion to utilize the omnibus vote for approval of the minutes of the previous meetings listed on tonight's agenda under the title of omnibus vote designation. Alderman Dorchenaz made the motion, seconded by Alderman Jones. Discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Shawn Burdell.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, the actual minutes we'll be approving will be the minutes of the regular meeting held May 7th, 2012, minutes of the Water Environmental Committee meeting held May 10th, 2012, minutes of the Lake Airport Committee held May 10th, 2012, minutes of the Ordinance Committee meeting held May 17th, 2012, and minutes of the Finance Committee meeting held May 17th, 2012. So I'd entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Shawn Burdell.
Second, Your Honor.
Seconded by Alderman. Walters, discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Shawn Burdell.
Yes.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Moving on to discussions and our motions to approve, adopt, and/or deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and refer to an appropriate committee in whole or in part the following listed motions, ordinances, or resolutions. And I'd like to start out by asking for approval, my appointment of Mr. Tom Freevert to the Board of Appeals.
So moved, Your Honor.
Okay. Alderman Walters, seconded by Alderman Heatherling. He will be finishing up the term, and his term will actually now run to June of 2014. So I would ask City Clerk Pam Peabody, well, we better take the vote first, huh? Roll call.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Shawn Burdell.
Yes.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, Mr. Freevert, if you'll step forward, and I'll have City Clerk Pam Peabody do the swearing in.
Do solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of Court of Appeals to which you were appointed according to the best of your ability.
I do so solemnly swear.
Okay, moving on to the agenda, to a resolution. As the USDA power of attorney to D.R. Stock Incorporated for the city farm property, entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
Your Honor, that coming out of the Lake and Airport Committee, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Alderman Voda, second.
Second.
Alderman Lawrence, discussion or comments?
Should we wait until the reading of those motions to follow up with this resolution at that time, Your Honor?
That's in the minutes.
Oh, it's in the actual minutes of it? Okay. All right, we'll put that on hold for now.
Oh, I suppose it'll be held until the reading of the minutes of the motions.
All right. Moving on to an ordinance annexing certain territories surrounded or nearly surrounded by property which is incorporated within the city of Taylorville Route 104. Alderman Burdell.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Dorchenaz, discussion or comments on this? Hearing done, roll call.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Shawn Burdell.
Yes.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, ordinance annexing certain territory to the city. This will be 1209 Springfield Road.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Alderman Dorchenaz.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Burdell, discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Shawn Burdell.
Yes.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
That motion passes. Moving on to a motion to advertise for bids for the painting of the Cherokee Street water tower.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Alderman Dorchenaz.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Seconded by Alderman Walters, discussion or comments on this? Hearing done, roll call.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Shawn Burdell.
Yes.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have a motion to approve the First Church of the Nazarene's request to close a portion of South Simpson Street for their Spirit Fest being held on June 2nd, 2012, from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. And I believe Alderman Walters, you are...
Yes, that, if I may, Your Honor, that came through as a request to the Street Committee Chairman, which I am, and I'd like to introduce Mr. Tim Hamill here this evening. He's here from the church, and I'd like to have a motion to open the floor so he can speak to us because it's too late to be put on the Street and Circuit Committee agenda.
Motion by Alderman Burdell, seconded by Alderman Jones, discussion or comments? Hearing done, all those in favor? Against? Motion passes, floor is open.
Let me go ahead and stand up and just tell us a little bit about it.
I've got flyers here for everybody that pretty much explains everything. It's a little here for me to...
Yes, sure.
We have 12, 11 college students coming from our university, and it's a big deal. Usually they have to wait three to four years to get them, and we got them this quickly. So it's a, it's a big deal. So we're doing a Christian carnival for the first time. And we'd like to block off Simpson Street because we're doing, and everything's free. Everything, we're doing free food, we're having a dunk tank. Mayor Brothers, I'd like to invite you to participate.
I will be throwing. I've got a heck of an arm.
And we're having a free car wash, so we've invited over probably 3,000 people. So every Nazarene church in Illinois is delighted, every church in Taylorville and Christian carnival is invited, so we're expecting an enormous crowd. So we need all the space we can. We're gonna have parking at the food center, and the senior center is gonna allow us to park there, but we need all the space we can. That's why I'm requesting. And I'd like you to meet our new pastor, Ed Happy. This is the council, he's our new pastor.
Welcome. Welcome. Welcome, yes. All right, based on that, Your Honor, I was contacted by Mr. Tim Hamill in regards to having that event on June 2nd, and I knew that it would not fall within the regiment that we normally have to go through the Street and Circuit Committee, so that's why I asked to have it put on the agenda this evening for the city council. And all of you received in your packet a map showing the property owners around it, the church property, and the names of the people that live there that might be impacted. So the only thing that I would ask this evening, before I make the motion, of Mr. Hamill, would be, would you please contact Victoria Teague that lives right across the street from you, and I'll give you a map that has that name on it.
I know which one.
She's the only one that would be impacted by this. All right? So based on that, Your Honor, I'd like to amend the motion so it's clarified a little bit better. I'd like to make a motion to approve the First Church of the Nazarene's request to close a portion of South Simpson Street from West Franklin South for one half a block to the alley for their Spirit Fest on June the 2nd, 2012, from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Second.
Seconded by Alderman Heatherling. I guess, point of order, we have to close the floor.
We need to close, I'm sorry.
I'll entertain a motion to close the floor.
I'll leave it.
Alderman Walters, seconded by Alderman Jones.
I got ahead of myself there.
Discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Now my motion stands.
All right. Now, I've got a motion by Alderman Walters, and a second by Alderman Heatherling, discussion or comment on this motion? Hearing done, roll call.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Shawn Burdell.
Yes.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And one final thing I'd like to ask, Mr. Hamill, will you have barricades that you're putting across there? Will you need to get something from the city of...
We'll probably need you something.
Okay, would you contact Mr. Dick Wiseman behind you there, the Street Superintendent, for some barricades to block that off? And then he'll, he'll work with you to deliver them, and have you, you know, set them up and take them down. All right? And good luck to you on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Moving on to city attorney updates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not a whole lot to report. I did meet with Joe Green and Alderman Walters last week. We discussed some, what I call, house cleaning issues. We have, I've delivered to Pam Peabody the Sloan-Taylorville Exchange Agreement, Ordinance, Exchange Agreement, and Resolution, so that should be forthcoming in the very near future. We'll finally put an end to the Mester-Sloan-Taylorville issues out there. We also discussed the Kim Morton issue and the revised easement that we need for that. I have sent Kim Morton a copy of that, and I hope to hear from her in the very near future. We also have some additional easements out there, one for Gekner. I think that's gonna be signed probably this week, based upon my conversation with Pam Peabody, and I assume that the Tullis and the city of Taylorville will be forthcoming also. Other than that, that's about all I have.
Question or comments for the city attorney? Okay. Moving on to mayor updates. One thing, about this time last year, WCIA Channel 3 was in town, and they did a "Our Town" special on this, kind of a weeks-long summary of activities and all. They're back again this year, looking for ideas and all, and because I was out of town last week, I asked Alderman Voda to kind of sit in and act as the city's liaison regarding that, and, you know, basically they're just looking for ideas, new stories, things that make Taylorville unique, something we'd be proud of to have them focus on. And so if you have any specific ideas, please, you know, contact me or Alderman Voda, and we'll, we'll get them to the right person, and, because it's one chance to really promote the city, and we want to take advantage of it. So Alderman Voda, is there anything you'd like to add?
Just, just one of the things that they did point out is the, this is not a guaranteed thing for the city to be involved with this production every year. We're very fortunate as the city of Taylorville that we had, we have so much out there that they are, they had a list that they ran with from last year that didn't get covered, and we've added on to that. So this is two years running that we're, we're in this program, so it's a very positive thing for the community because it does reach a very broad group of people. Their viewership's very large. So with that said, I think, I think it's fortunate, we may not be in the running next year for this, so let's, let's do the best we can this year. Your Honor, if I could speak to the issue.
Alderman Walters.
This will be an agenda item on my Street and Circuit Committee meeting for Thursday night, and Ms. Patty Hornbuckle, the new CEO and President of the Chamber, will be at that meeting to go into more details about what they're trying to accomplish for that evening.
Thank you. Did get some good news this week, or I think it's good news anyway. A local resident, Rodney Davis, got the Republican nomination, you know, to run for the 13th district, possibly replacing a US Representative, Tim Johnson, in the November election. And I'm about as bipartisan as a person can be. I mean, in my opinion, at least 50% of both parties need to be out of there, but besides that, you know, I'm not gonna advocate one party over another, but, you know, I do know that we need good people there. And in my opinion, Rodney Davis fills that bill, so I hope that, with him being a local guy, that we, we can support him. Speaking of silly things that these legislators do, they're once again looking at our local government distributive fund, with the idea of putting a freeze on that that would prevent municipalities from garnering any of the growth over the next couple of years, so they can put it into their own pockets. So that hasn't come up for a vote yet, but it's just another way where they're trying to take money from us and make life tougher on us. This past weekend, we had the Third Annual SB Edwards Fishing Tournament. This was Saturday at the Quanish Park on Lake Taylorville. I believe we had a total of somewhere between 68 and 70 kids, and it seemed like that's growing every year. My hat's off to Alan Jackson for helping run that thing, and, and anyone else that's helped. I mean, we had more kids than we had poles this year, and that's a good problem. So, like I say, it continues to grow. The weather cooperated this year, and it was quite an event, so I hope we keep that going. This year's Memorial Day services will be May 28th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. out at the cemetery, and they've already got the, the flags up, I believe, don't they, Bill? And it always looks great out there, and I think this year's guest speaker is Judge Ron Spears. Ron always does a great job, so I'd urge anyone that can to attend that. I think you'd really enjoy that. The solar panels have been installed and are operating at the airport. You know, I was told that the electric meter has been moving backwards, and that's the direction we want it to go, so that's, that's a very good thing, meaning that we're getting some production from them, so. Over the next couple of weeks, the actual software that will hopefully allow us to show the production on our website will be installed, so looking forward to that, and, and again, within a couple of weeks, I'd like to have some kind of ribbon-cutting ceremony out there, and I'm working on putting that together right now, and we'll advise you when that happens. The last thing I have is, you know, people keep asking me where we are on Tanaska, and I've gotta tell you, I don't know that, if there's a person on this planet that knows where we are on Tanaska right now. They, they keep trying different things, changing different things, and, and I don't have a clue. I'm supposed to go up Wednesday, and I heard there's, they might bring it forth in one of the committees up there, what that plan is. At this point, I have no idea, but Jack Brown did contact me and ask me to go up with him on the Wednesday morning, so we'll see what they have in mind there. I, it's just very frustrating because this project makes so much sense, and one challenge I, I'd put out to any of the opponents is, is for them to, to sit down with somebody in front of an unbiased group and talk this thing through. Every single time I've seen that happen, our project has worn out. It makes sense, but we have to try and overcome all the propaganda the opponents are putting out, and that's a very difficult thing to do. So I don't know if we'll get it done or not, but we're not gonna quit trying. That's all I got, unless anyone's got questions, or Alderman Voda.
Just, just another comment to build on, on the airport, is we had the first EAA breakfast of the season, Sunday, very well attended, weather was great. Last count, Dick Reber was out there taking photos of planes coming in. Last count he had was 38 planes, and while I was talking with him, there was probably another eight or 10 flew in, so we had a very good turnout at the airport, so.
And a very good breakfast.
Your Honor, did you, would you want to mention that about the striping on Sprecher Street?
Well, yeah, just, just to kind of let people know, the, the people working on Sprecher Street, they're out towards Ace Hardware from Chene Street, are back in town to finish up the, put the permanent striping on, so they'll be doing that over the next two days or so, and so there may be some slight delays in traffic as they do that, but we'll bring that project to close here in the near future. Anything else?
Hearing nothing, and we'll move on to the committee reports. Discussions and our motions to approve, adopt, and/or deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and refer to an appropriate committee in whole or in part the matters regarding the following subject matters discussed at the committee level. And we'll start off with Water Environmental.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's a motion, this motion needs to be amended, also in the minutes, underwater rates proposal. I didn't catch that when I proofread them. Under Water Environmental, it said there's a motion to increase the outside city limits industrial users' water rates four and a half percent for the next two years, with first year's rate increasing to $1.91 per 100 cubic feet, not per cubic feet. That's what Mr. Walters wanted it to be. But it's per 100 cubic feet, beginning January the 1st, 2013, so I'd like to amend my motion, and I'll make that motion.
I'll give a second on that.
Second, that's Your Honor.
Alderman Walters, discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Shawn Burdell.
Yes.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Shawn Burdell.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, the next motion doesn't have to be amended. Good. And it says, there's a motion to accept the low bid of $7,359 from Shutey Supply for the service line materials. I'll make that in the form of a motion, Your Honor.
Okay. I'll give a second on that.
Thank you.
Seconded by Alderman Voda, discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Shawn Burdell.
Yes.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, could I just interrupt for one second?
Please.
Usually we have ordinances drafted to, with water rate increases. Is, is that gonna hold true this time too, Mr. Dorchenaz?
Yes.
So could we just incorporate in the minutes to instruct me to do that? For those two?
We can definitely do that.
I'll change my motion.
I'll amend my seconds.
Well, either we're gonna just make a, is either just to make a separate motion, instruct me to do it?
That'd be fine too, either way.
Motion to have the city attorney prepare the proper ordinances for the industrial water rate increases. And that's made by Alderman Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Seconded by Alderman Walters, discussion or comments? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Okay, moving on to Lake Airport Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. Several motions came out of the Lake and Airport Committee meeting, first of which was the motion to accept Duane Stock as the USDA power of attorney for the city farmland. I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Okay, I'll second on that.
Second, Your Honor.
Alderman Walters, discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Shawn Burdell.
Yes.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next item that came out of the committee was a motion to allow Lake Superintendent Jackson and Water Superintendent Spiegel to direct city engineer Joe Green to do a study in regards to dredging of Lake Taylorville to determine the amount of silt, the density, the best location, and what size of berm was needed, at a cost not to exceed $15,000, with half of that coming from the Lake Restoration Fund and half coming from the water fund. And I'll make that motion with a comment.
Okay.
I'll second. I'll second that, Your Honor.
Seconded by Alderman Walters, Alderman Voda, go ahead with your comment.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to point out that we are looking at what we need to do with the lake to retain what we have. We're focused mainly, unless I misunderstood, but we're focused mainly at the silt dams and trying to get those to where they are cleaned out, to where they continue to perform as we need them to perform to maintain the current depth of the lake, with that said.
Okay. Alderman Dorchenaz, go ahead with your comment.
I abstain from that vote. Reason I abstain was because I wasn't comfortable with Joe Green doing that work. I didn't know if his firm was able to do that. So after the meeting, I called Mr. Green, and he's convinced me that his firm's not only capable, it's more capable than most, so I'm a...
Alderman Walters.
One other comment that that will kind of add to the comment from Alderman Voda. We anticipate starting at the south end of the lake with the big weir that we have down there, the, the large metal silt dam, and going along the east side of the lake to the other two that the city of Taylorville employees, I think, built, and do those large ones first. But we have a total of, I think, 11, 11, I think, silt dams out there, and ultimately we need to clean all of those silt dams out. Some we think we'll be able to, if we can get the manpower and the time and the money, of course, like anything else, we can dry dredge some of those out and get those back to capacity.
Any other comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next motion was to lease property to Lisa and Rick Champlin for a three-year period. Specific property with terms of agreement to include legal documentation and description of the property will follow at a later date. I'll make that motion with a comment, your honor.
First, Alderman Voda, give a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Coons, go ahead with your comment.
Thank you, your honor. If, if everybody had the opportunity to really delve into the minutes, that particular motion was written very loosely, and with that said, I was, I'm glad it passed out of committee to council, because I think it needs further discussion at this level with the, with the city attorney being here. I did call Clerk Peabody, we discussed it a little bit, discussed it with the mayor quite a bit, but I think this is the opportune time, with the attorney being here and not having to bring him into a committee meeting, that we, we explore the opportunities of what we can or cannot do. One of the things I do want to keep in mind is, once we make a decision whether it is to lease, and specifically, if we were to sell this property, once we lose it, we don't have it anymore, and we lose control of that particular, that parcel. So, with that said, I, I would very much invite questions. I know that I've had a couple of Aldermen calling to question me, and I stated that we would be discussing this in more detail this evening, so with that, I'll relinquish the floor and let the answers to the questions begin.
Alderman Walters.
Part of the discussion that evening, and it's, it is partially stated in here, that there would be expenses incurred for the survey of the property, and I feel that maybe it wasn't explained upon enough here, if we're going to be leasing this property, and this does pass the council to Mr. and Mrs. Champlin, that they should have to pay for the entire cost of the surveying and the entire cost of the legal work or paperwork for the attorney fees if we're gonna lease this to them.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Heberlin.
And I hope this goes back to committee. There's just a whole host of questions that need to be answered, and I think one of them is, legally, can we lease this property without a public offering? And then, I, I think we need to develop a lease so that we know the details of that lease before we, before we act on it.
I would, I would agree with you. I think it does need to go back to committee and be worked on. I did have a chance to talk to the city attorney today, and, and he, he does have some answers, but I'd rather not get into them here, and we're gonna take them back to the committee and, and discuss them, which is what I think we need to do. The answer is yes, given the right circumstances. We can do it without bidding, but if we don't meet those requirements, then we have to bid, so I think the committee is the place to educate ourselves on, on how to do that, and then make our decision on whether to move forward.
Well, based, based on that, your honor, then could we request that the city attorney give us some kind of a, of a sheet to, to look at with some of the, the guidelines or recommendations as to how we can or can't do this, so that you'll save me having to try to look it up?
I'd be more than happy to. The, the thing about it is, gentlemen, you know, the municipality Taylorville, the City of Taylorville, has absolute right to, to lease, and it's not like when you sell property, when you're leasing, that there are not very many strings attached, meaning there's not any publications that are necessary, unless you, unless you have a lease for, for over 20 years, and, and if you have, any municipal officer can enter into leases buying the City of Taylorville and the other party, if they're two years or less. So, yeah, there's no doubt that we can do it, and there's no bidding involved.
Any other comments?
And I can get, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but I can give you the site. I'll just give it to Pam Peabody, she can distribute it, that'd be great.
All right, thank you. Alderman Dorcheness.
The reason he wants his property is to be able to hunt on it, and his property is adjacent to that, to that property. It's really pretty poor property. You can't till it. It's about the only thing you could do is hunt on it, but that's city property, and we've allowed hunting on city property. Is that gonna be a problem for him? If he leases it? If, if, if everything went forward?
Uh-huh.
And he was able to lease it, would he be able to hunt on it, since, since it's still city property?
Oh, sure. Right, as long as, assuming he would not be in violation in any, of any, any hunting ordinances, that, I assume, Alderman Dorcheness, that that would be part of the, the lease, that the purpose for the lease, you know, we can control what he does and doesn't do on that, he and she. So, yeah, we would incorporate language in there to say what he's gonna use it for. Now, the only other thing there, that begs the question, a liability issue, okay? Because we're still the owners, okay? When people get hurt on property, the owner, record title owner's the first person to get sued, so we would want to have some indemnification and hold harmless language in the, in normal customary stuff to protect us from any type of liability if somebody got hurt out there. I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that.
Alderman Heberlin.
Since there's just a whole host of issues to address, I'd like to make a motion to table this issue and send it back to committee for further discussion and development of a lease that might be presented to us.
Second.
Thank you.
The motion by Alderman Heberlin, second by Alderman Burdell. Roll call, please.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Randy Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Motion is tabled and will reappear at the committee level. Alderman Voda.
Thank you, your honor. The final motion coming out of there was a motion to approve the April 25th, 2012 Boyd Davenport Youth Reservation Council Minutes. I'll go ahead and make that as a motion to the full city council this time to be accepted.
Second.
Second, Alderman Heberlin. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. And if you would, the resolution we were holding.
And the resolution we are holding, the resolution to give the USDA power of attorney to Duane Stock, actually, it's a DR Stock Incorporated of the City of Taylorville Farm Property, I'll make that motion.
Okay. You have a second on that?
Second.
Second, Alderman Lawrence. Discussion or comments? Hearing and roll call.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Randy Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, moving on to the finance committee.
Motion, we have one motion coming out of the finance committee meeting of last week. I will make the motion to forward the 10 budgets listed there, being the safety, hotel, motel, contingency audit, ESDA, ban, library, fire, pension, police pension, and perpetual care funds for the fiscal year 2012, 2013, to forward those budgets to the city treasurer for, for the recent time.
Second.
Second, Alderman Jones. Discussion or comments?
I would like to make one comment, your honor.
Go ahead, Alderman Lawrence.
This being 10 out of approximately 29 departmental budgets we have, we're on target to finish the remaining five at next month's finance committee meeting. The significant ones, I believe, are mainly administration and our retirement IMRF and social security funds. We're on target to approve those, and in July, we'll be ready for the full council.
Okay, good. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Okay, next, we have a motion to approve and ratify payment of bills in the amount of
I'll make that motion, your honor, with a few comments.
Second. Second by Alderman Burdell. Go ahead with your comments, Alderman Lawrence.
This is the second of the month batch of bills that totaled, as we said, $198,472. We have some big-ticket items, but by and large, it's pretty much a routine batch. Under our utilities, which are relatively big at the second month, we're spending $12,602. We get hit with the, the street lighting, which is $7,600 out of that $12,000, and the water department is a big electric user, that amounts to about $3,400. The total of $12,006 is somewhat down from what's been the last three-month average of about $15,000 or $16,000 a month, so that, we're pending the air conditioning season, I guess, to see it go back up. Have our usual fuel bill, Christian County FS, with our diesel and gasoline. That totals $14,785, and if you'd like to know, diesel and no lead is costing us roughly